Okay, we're ready.
Dean, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't really hear you that well. A little bit louder, not a whole lot, just a little bit.
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, but I can't hear you. Is that on my end?
No, it might be on mine.
I want to make sure I can hear.
Can you hear me, Gail?
I can hear you, yes. Am I still glad to see you?
Well, I'm glad to be seen.
Hope you're feeling better.
I am, thank you.
How about now, Gail, is that better?
No, not really. But I.
I have to, I'll move to the other.
No, 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 I can hear you.
Okay.
I'm just not loudly, and it could be me, too. I mean, meaning I'm going deaf and I'm getting old. These things happen.
Yes, they do.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January. Yes, January meeting already. The zoning board, Laconia zoning board of adjustments. And I do have a public announcement I have to make for the meeting. The public has access to listen and participate in this meeting by using the following link. Zoom meeting and enter the password. You must be using the Zoom app on an enabled device to participate in the meeting at the appropriate times. When, January 19th, tonight. We're a little late, it's a little 6:38 starting. Please copy the link below to join the webinar. Or you can type it in to your browser, HTTPS backslash colon backslash backslash USO2web.zoom.us backslash J backslash eighty-seven, one-five-three-seven-zero-five-one-five-five? Question mark. The password is E-A-H-A-Y-D-M-P-one-N-three-E-one-M capital M. Capital J, capital E, capital Z, capital F, capital Z, lowercase Y, capital S, capital X. Lowercase A, lowercase E, K-K-R, uppercase U, uppercase T, zero-nine. Webinar ID is eight-seven-one-five-three-seven-zero-five-one-five-five. Passcode four-nine-seven-four-one-five. Listen only call by calling Webinar, once again, is eight-seven-one-five-three-seven-zero-five-one-five-five. Passcode four-nine-seven-four-one-five. Using the option only allows you to listen to the meeting with no opportunity to participate. For problems, please call six-zero-three-five-two-four-three-eight-seven-seven, extension two-four-nine, or email zoning@laconianh.gov. To view this meeting on YouTube in the city of Laconia is HTTPS code backslash backslash WWW dot YouTube dot com backslash Laconia NH. But unfortunately, the YouTube software doesn't function well with the Zoom software, so that option would not be available for you tonight. And with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Michael Foot. Steve Bogart.
Here.
Roland Mayhew. Gail Ober.
Here.
Michael Delavecchia. And we have a new alternate, Marcia Hayward.
Here.
Good evening, Marcia. I'm Steve. I'm, at the moment, the chairman, and I'd like to welcome you to the zoning board.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, feel free to answer. But if I may, I don't know if they filled your hand or not. When we go through all the agenda items on each agenda, you would be able to ask questions of the board and of whatever, you can ask questions. But when it comes time to vote, unless you're actually been asked to participate in the action, which you would know beforehand, then you would not be able to vote as an alternate. Okay? Any questions?
I am fully aware of that, thank you.
Very good. And with that, I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. We have, let's see, three, four, five, we covered. Six is the election of officers. It's our annual officer meeting tonight, and so that's next on the agenda. So we'll start with the chair.
I'd like to make the motion to, I'd like to nominate Steve Bogart to be chair of the zoning board.
Do we have anybody?
Mike, you're muted.
No, I didn't say anything, I'm good.
That's okay, you seconded it, though, right? Okay, good.
Yes, no, I didn't.
Oh, all right, great.
Okay, is there anybody else?
I want nominations voted.
Okay, all those in favor of Steve being chairman?
All right.
I'll do it by roll call.
Roll call?
Yep.
Let me call the roll. Mike Foot.
I would vote in the affirmative of that. I thank Steve very much for what he has done for us over the past umpteen years, and I would like to continue in that direction.
Okay, and Gail Ober.
Yeah, I agree.
Roland Mayhew.
I vote in the affirmative.
Roland, yes.
And I also vote in the affirmative.
Okay, and Mike Delavecchia.
I favor the nomination.
Okay, and Steve, do you favor your own nomination?
Sure. Thank y'all. I would like to thank y'all for that. Now, next will be vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Gail Ober.
And I'll second that.
Gail, are you good with that?
Um? Can't hear you.
Are you good with being nominated?
Oh, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, we've been seconded. Okay, anybody else wish to be nominated? There being none, I therefore ask to move the, the pre-call roll.
Okay, Mike Delavecchia.
I favor Gail as vice chair.
Roland Mayhew.
Yes, I do favor that.
Steve Bogart.
Yes.
Mike Foot.
Yes, I vote in the affirmative.
And Gail.
Yes.
And then the last will be the secretary. Do we have any nominations for the secretary? Mike Foot?
I would second that.
Mike, do you accept the nomination?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that, anybody else wish to be nominated? There being none, I'd like to call the roll, please.
Roland Mayhew.
I vote in the affirmative.
Mike Delavecchia.
I favor.
Steve Bogart.
Affirmative.
Gail Ober.
Yes.
And Mike Foot.
Affirmative.
Okay.
We are full board, we have all committed, we have a new board, we have it all.
Twenty twenty-one.
Ooh. That are here. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Minutes will be next. Everybody get an opportunity to read the minutes.
Yes, I did. Now, I'll make a motion to the text, step the minutes as written.
On one thing, on nine-point-one-five, this is Gail Ober noted that it doesn't impede the site line. I would say that site should be S-I-G-H-T, not S-I-T-E.
Thank you.
All right, I will, I will re-motion that with Mike's correction, unless there are any other corrections.
And there's one more correction. It's a small one. It was one of the ones that had no one made the motion.
But the motion was moved.
I can't locate it again. I thought I marked it. It was one of those two items.
Uh, do you want me to withdraw my motion and we can defer this to next month, Steve?
Are you looking at this here? I don't see the motion on this one here, but I do see a second on the second page.
There was a second, but there wasn't not a motion after Gail reopened. Gail opened it up and then, then it showed the motions, but it didn't, it showed the second, but it didn't say. So it had to be this.
Right.
Mike, I've got that motion.
Which one is it?
Nine, uh, six? I thought it was mine, because he made the second part of the motion on the second part.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
Okay, so we have a couple of additions.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion, my motion to approve with those, with those changes.
Very good.
And I'll second that.
We have a second.
All those in favor of the motion?
I favor.
Yes.
Okay, looks like it's unanimous. So I need to read it out to you.
No.
All right. And this is hard. So, here we start, nine-point-one, continuing public hearings, considerations and possibilities with a possible vote. The purpose of the agenda section is for the board to continue the public hearings for the applicants from the previous meeting. So first up is going to be nine-point-one, uh, two, zero, two-zero-two-zero dash zero-one-zero-six, variance, one oh eight Academy Street. The area over from last meeting.
Correct.
I would, a note to all folks that are on Zoom in the waiting. If you could raise your hand, so I have a long list there.
So if the applicant is available, please raise your hand.
The applicant that I have listed is Butterfly House, Thomas Labrie, who I do not see on the applicant list.
Okay, this is the second meeting in a row that this applicant has not been viewed. Recommendation from the board.
I, correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe Karen or Dean could answer this. I believe he notified us last month that he was not going to be appearing. Is that, is my recollection correct?
I don't believe Mr. Labrie was in attendance at the last meeting either.
But did he notify us ahead of time?
I have not heard from the applicant.
Okay, um, I think.
If it's up to me and I want the board's direction, but I'd like to have this, uh, what's that called? I want to remove it without prejudice.
Deny without prejudice?
I, I agree with that.
Not deny, I just wanted to go away. Without prejudice, so they can re-apply whenever they wish.
I agree with that, like a motion this year? Or do we need?
I don't know what the correct word is for removing it, but I know it's not a denial, because it's denied to get a hearing. Withdrawal.
Withdrawal.
Yes.
That would be the correct term.
You can make the motion, Gail, or I will.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, the motion that we withdraw without prejudice. The application Z zero-two-zero-twenty, uh, Z zero, or Z O, two-zero-two-zero dash zero-one-zero-six. Application for Butterfly House LLC, owner, Thomas E. Labrie.
Okay, so we have.
I would say that Mr. Labrie was actually an agent for the owner.
Or an agent for the owner, yeah, okay.
So I have a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, come on.
Mike?
Favor the motion.
Roland?
Favor the motion?
Mike?
Favor the motion?
Gail?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is application Z zero-two-zero-two-zero dash zero-one-zero-seven. It's a variance from Province Street. The applicant is requesting a variance from Article Six, Section two thirty-five dash thirty-three. Maximum residential unit density to allow for nine units per acre in the RG zone to allow for the construction of nine units market-sized apartment complex. Now, this application has two parts, so with that, I'm going to go ahead and open up the second one at the same time, that way we give the applicant the ability to discuss both. And with that, though, we would vote on each application separately.
Okay.
Is that okay with the board?
It is. To be okay, so I'm going to go ahead and read the second portion of this in.
Application number Z zero-two-zero-two-zero, one zero, no, zero-one, zero-eight, S eight, Province Street, it's a special exception. Per Article Five, Section two thirty-five dash two-six, use is permitted by a trust respective for a multifamily dwelling to all active construction of nine units market-sized apartment complex. And with that, I have a question for plan, which I, uh, the special exception is for the multi-family units, or is it for the nine?
It's for the use.
The use.
The variance is for the number of units. So if you approve the variance, it then would, the special exception would be for whatever number you approve the variance for. Currently, the variance, they're looking for nine units per acre, so to get the ninety units. If you, if you approve that, then the special exception is just for the use of the multifamily, would just be that number of units.
But it could be approved for a multifamily without the variance being passed.
Correct. It would just have to do current density requirements.
Current.
Okay. Any questions of what?
No.
Of this at the moment? Gail, are you good?
No, I'm good, I'm good, I think we do it that way, yep.
Okay. Applicants, is that a case of you?
Yes, that's perfect. It's all you, sir. Okay. Well, it's not all me. I'm attorney Phil Brugyard, representing Delar Gilbert and Son, and I've got Mr. Brian Gilbert from that company with me. And I also have John Rokee, the engineer for the process project, who's appearing virtually. Basically, we've had the opportunity to have a really good site visit out with members of the board. And I understand that all the members, I don't know about Roland and I don't know about Steve, that have been out, gone out there on their own, but I think all the other members have been out there either on the site visit or on themselves. And it's, it's an amazing oasis in the city. The pictures don't really do it justice. It's a very isolated location, but yet it's in the middle of everything. It's bounded by a forest, a cemetery, a power line, and also a very high berm on one side that basically, unless you look up from Province Street just right, you, you, you can't see anything up on the property. And to segue into the board's just discussion here, in preparing for my presentation, I thought it made sense to do the special exception presentation first, because it tells you more about the project than I think just starting off cold with the variance. So what I'm going to be talking about first is the presentation on the special exception. Basically speaking, we're requesting a multifamily dwellings pursuant to Article two thirty-five, twenty-six, Table one in the RG zone. Very important to know that apartments are allowed in the RG zone. They've been allowed in the RG zone since the ordinance was adopted many, many, many years ago. It's, it's not anything new. It is allowed. Apartments are allowed at the rate of six units per acre in the RG zone. While there may be some discussion further on, this is allowed under the current zoning ordinance. The use is specifically authorized as an apartment complex by special exception, and it's specifically authorized by the zoning. Pedestrian safety will be assured by a private sidewalk on the premises running to the existing sidewalk on Province Street. In our opinion, traffic congestion will not be an issue due to the ability to turn right or left out of the property. We are going to be encouraging people to turn left, and we are in discussions with the city about obtaining a right-of-way to exit Growth Road onto Hounzel Avenue for another permanent access point out of the complex. This is something that we understand that the planning board would want to see, another access, and we are working on it, and we, application's been made to the city manager for the city council, but unless the variance is granted, it really doesn't make sense for them to do anything. The access can be from Province Street in downtown Laconia or Route, Route one oh seven bypass, Route one oh six and South Main Street, and the proposed access through the Lakes Business Park, and encouraging traffic to turn left out of the complex. The Laconia Water Works, Ben, confirms that sufficient supply exists, so not as to overload the public water system. Also, there is sufficient water pressure and capacity to supply the sprinkler systems for the ninety-unit apartment complex. The public drainage system will only be, stormwater will only be utilized in a minor properly designed fashion at the entrance to the project on Province Street. All other road, parking lot, building, and roof drainage will be contained, treated, and managed on-site. The Department of Public Works, Crystal Larson, confirms that sufficient capacity exists, so not as to overload the public sewage system as a result of the proposed ninety-unit apartment complex. The stormwater drainage design will assure that there will not be any significant increase in stormwater runoff onto adjacent property or streets. The apartment complex will not create excessive demand for municipal police, fire protection, or schools. The complex will be sprinkled, alarmed, and have hydrants. Solid waste disposal services for the complex will be dumpsters contracted out to private garbage disposal companies, so there will be no excessive demand on the city's solid waste disposal services. There are no special provisions for multifamily apartment complex use other than height restrictions in the ordinance of thirty-five feet. We intend to meet those requirements, and they will only be thirty-five feet tall, and presentation and approval of a multi-site, multifamily site plan to the planning board. The apartment complex will not create any hazards to the health, safety, or general welfare of the public, because the apartment complex will not be detrimental or out of character with the adjacent neighborhood because of its isolation and privacy bounded by a cemetery and raw land owned by the city of Laconia and the Lakes Region Business Park. There will be no noise or pollution caused by the apartment complex. There will be no view or contact with any residential offenders on Province Street. The proposed location is appropriate for the requested use because the isolated nature of the site, bounded by wooded portions of a cemetery, power lines, city of Laconia, and Lakes Region Business Park, ensure that this location is an appropriate location for an apartment complex. The location is totally isolated. The apartment complex is consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and the master plan. The zoning ordinance allows multifamily dwellings and apartment complexes by special exception in the RG zone, Article two thirty-five, Section twenty-six, Table one. The master plan for the city of Laconia mentions in several places the need for affordable mid-market priced housing for residents who work or are moving into the area, as well as teachers, policemen, firefighters, nurses, and other well-paid professionals, as well as factory and construction workers. This conventional market-priced apartment complex will fill this need as stated in the master plan. That's my presentation for the special exception. Moving on to the variance. Since I've told you what the complex entails, I'm going to go right into the five variance criteria. The granting variance would not be in the public interest, because the requirement that the variance not be contrary to the public interest is related to the requirement that this variance be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. In this particular case, an apartment complex, multifamily, is in allowed use in the zoning ordinance, Article two thirty-five, Section twenty-six, Table one, in the RG zone. In other words, this is allowed as a use in the ordinance, so it's not contrary to the public interest, and it's allowed in the RG zone. The apartment complex will not create any excessive demand for municipal police, fire, protection, or schools. protection or schools. It will not create any hazards to the health, safety or general welfare of the public because its, um, isolation and privacy bounded by the cemetery and Roth Forest of land. There will be no noise or pollution caused by the apartment complex. There will be no view or contact with any residential abutters on Province Street. The location of the apartment complex is appropriate for the required use because the isolated nature of the site, uh, bounded by woods, a cemetery, power lines and Roth forested land. And the apartment complex is consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and the master plan. The master plan mentions in several places the need for affordable and mid-market priced housings for residents who work in the area. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because the apartment complex is allowed by the zoning ordinance in Article two thirty-five, section twenty-six, table one in the RG zone. The apartment complex is consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and the master plan. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because the apartment complex, multi-family use is allowed by the zoning ordinance, Article two thirty-five, section twenty-six, table one, the RG zone. There will be no noise or pollution caused by the apartment complex. There will be no view or contact with any residential abutters on Province Street. The apartment complex is consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and the master plan. Perhaps the guiding rule on substantial justice is that any loss to the individual is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. In this particular case, I believe that the only economical viable use for this property is a ninety-unit apartment complex, and it is a gain to the owner, true, but is also a gain to the public since it provides new affordable mid-market rentals for Laconia when they are so urgently and desperately needed. In this case, it is a win-win to the owner and the general public. If the variance were granted, the, the values of surrounding properties would not be diminished because apartment complexes are allowed by the zoning ordinance, Article two thirty-five, section twenty-six, table one in the RG zone. There's no noise or pollution caused by the complex. There'll be no view or contact with any residential abutters on Province Street. The apartment complex is consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and the master plan. Due to the isolated location, lack of view by any residential abouter and orientation of the complex to the business park, the apartment complex is not part of the Province Street South End residential neighborhood. The apartment complex is cut off by a cemetery and the power lines and will create no noise or detrimental or adverse issues that would affect property values on Province Street. Increased traffic could be controlled by limiting right-hand turning down north on Province Street and encouraging egress via Route one oh seven and South Main Street at Route, and Route one oh six and the new egress through the Lakes Business Park. Unnecessary hardship. An applicant seeking an area variance must satisfy two requirements to establish hardship. One, uh, the area hardship is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. And two, the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. In this particular case, only a ninety-unit apartment complex, complex is economically viable from a cash flow standpoint due to the increased construction costs of between a hundred and sixty to a hundred and ninety thousand per unit. It is not economically feasible to have sufficient cash flow to support the debt related to the complex unless there are ninety units to provide the needed cash flow. Also, a smaller amount of units would not support onsite management, which is desirable. From a cash flow and management perspective, ninety units are necessary. Under the second factor, the ZBA must look at the project, uh, proposed by the applicant and not whether it could be used for something else. And if you were to do that analysis, in order to comply with the zoning ordinance, the applicant would have to reduce its project by thirty-three percent, and that would result in financial hardship and economic non-viability and no onsite management. Therefore, there is no other reasonably feasible method of effectuating the proposed use without obtaining an area variance. The apartment complex is consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and the master plan. The zoning ordinance allows multi-family dwellings and apartment complexes, complexes by special exception in the RG zone, Article two thirty-five, section twenty-six, table one. The master plan for the City of Laconia mentions in several places the need for affordable mid-market priced housing for residents who work or are moving into the area, as well as teachers, policemen, firefighters, nurses and other well-paid professionals, as well as factory and construction workers. This conventional market-priced apartment complex will fill this need as stated in the master plan. Um, that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions by any members of the board, I would eat, I would be happy to answer them. Mr. Gilbert would be happy to answer them. And if there's any technical questions, Mr. Rokee would be happy to answer them.
Um.
Wait, Steve, you're muted.
Uh, thank you, Gail. Uh, anybody have any questions of the, uh, applicant?
I do.
Please.
Okay, we are only discussing the special exception now, correct?
No.
Well, this is for the applicant, but I just wanna make sure we're all talking about the same thing here. We're not doing these at the same time. Are we asking all our questions now? And then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I had him go ahead and read.
Okay.
I did. Both of them and everything so that we can. Because one's really not good without the other.
That's fine. Yep, I just wanted to understand. So I have one que, I have a couple of questions, Attorney Brugyard or whoever wishes to answer them. Has any consideration been given to the intersection of one oh seven and South Main Street?
Um, that's a planning board issue. Uh, I think it's during their, uh, consideration.
Site plan review, but I'm, I'm asking the question, please. Have you thought about that?
Yeah, we've thought about it, but we don't, we don't think that that's relevant to this, uh, uh, this multi-family special exception. Uh, it's too, too far, too far away.
Okay. Um, and then it is my understanding that, doing the math, correct me if I'm wrong, you could build fifty-seven units there without a variance, correct?
Well, I think we could build more than that because I, there's some, it's actually the site's like ten point six acres, so.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I don't think that that's correct, but there's a lesser amount that can be built. You're correct.
Okay, that's, that was, um, my.
That, that, that doesn't, that doesn't, it's, it's not a financially feasible project, though.
I, I get that, Phil. I just wanted to know what you could build without a variance.
Uh, I, about, about sixty units, Gail, I think. I'm pretty sure that's the number. Could be sixty-two or three.
All right. And, um, and is it my understanding that you are going to connect the, uh, Province Street exit, uh, a sidewalk to the existing sidewalk, which is just below Boynton Court?
We were gonna connect the sidewalk to the city's existing sidewalk system on Province Street. We weren't going down Province Street.
Province Street has no sidewalks from your entrance to Boynton Court.
Well, that's something that the, the, the plant, the planning department, the planning board handles sidewalks, and if that's something they feel is important, um, we'd be happy to address it then.
Okay. I'm done. I, I mean, for now, I'm done.
Fine, go ahead. Unmute yourself, please.
Can I ask a question?
Uh.
Hold on, Mike's gonna speak first.
Okay.
A question here, Mr. Brugyard, is when I first looked at this and went for the sidewalk, we're looking at an emergency access that goes out to Hounslow Ave. And now you mentioned that it would be desired to hook up to Growth Road?
Yes, um, the, uh, initial discussion with planning was that an emergency access and utility access would be good for water and for the fire department. But in discussing this further with planning, it would, it was decided that it would be better to have a, a permanent second economic access that goes, goes backwards out to Growth Road. And, and there's also a twelve-inch waterline there that is only four hundred feet from the property. So it's actually better and shorter to go over the city property along the power line, which they can't really use for anything, anything else because of the power line, uh, to go out that, that way. So it's gonna have a, a, a nice access, access out to that, at Laconia Guilford area, area.
Across that piece that is the City of Laconia's property, when I look at that, is that actually the dog park also?
Well, it's above the, the, where the right-of-way would be is above the dog park, but the answer is correct, yes.
It's a very close neighbor. Looking at the.
It's, it's off the plan. It's up, it's up and over.
You see the bottom of, does the bottom of Growth Road show up on?
I guess I'm having trouble finding your other road.
If you give me just a minute, I can, uh, pull up Google Earth and then share my screen. I'm, uh, I'm working on that right now.
Okay. Instead of here, go up this way.
That would be the same, but it's gonna be a full-time access to Growth Road.
So is this Growth Road, the little frequency in the corner?
Yes, exactly correct. So it's gonna go out, out of here.
So Growth Road comes right down?
Yeah, this is a little better. See, Growth Road here comes down like this, and it would go like that.
I'm showing two. That's in there.
That's the, that's the boundary line adjustment plan. That's not, that would be the entrance, and the entrance is not on here. It would be out this way, going this way. It would be going the other direction.
And, and we have, uh, requested, um, that the city manager and the city council take a look at that, but they said that if I, we were successful with the variance, they would address it.
If I may, Steve.
So this second entrance, which I'm hearing wants to become more permanent than just a.
Emergency.
Emergency access is gonna give you access onto Hounslow Ave, which is gonna move traffic out to, um, Route three and Piches.
Yes.
Can go down onto the bottom of one oh six?
Yep, can take the bypass. Can go anywhere.
Can go down to South Main Street, can get onto the bypass.
It would be great. It would be great. Spread all the traffic right out.
So what are the opportunities of making that remain the entrance and not France?
Can you repeat that?
If that is successful, what about making that remain entrance off of Hounslow?
Well, we could, that's some, certainly something we could discuss with the planning board. We have no problem with that.
Because that would encourage further majority of the traffic.
That's an excellent, that's an excellent idea. That's an excellent, that's an excellent idea.
Then use the other one to answer this.
Secondary.
I see you, Laconia had a general. Can you look it out about planning and zoning laws?
I didn't hear the question, sorry.
How many years ago was it that Laconia had a general, uh, look at our, at our planning and zoning laws? Do we do it every ten years or do we every?
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. We have had a minor incremental revisions several times over the years, but a, a major revision to the boundary lines or the zones or the density within zones has not been done for probably over twenty years.
If, uh, if anybody wants to see this, I, I can share my screen. I have Google Earth up just, just so everybody sees where, uh, Growth Road, Growth Road is and Dog Park and everything in relation to this. I have it up.
Can we do that?
Wow.
Was that, everybody seeing that? Okay, so here's the site, and instead of going out this way, Growth Road is right there. So it would come out of the site, go across through the, like a joint use agreement through the easement and out to the, hold the sack over here. So that, that's how close the Dog Park and Growth Road is.
Four hundred feet.
It is.
It's over by the old Brutonburg.
Right there, it's about, yeah, it's about four hundred feet, a little over four hundred feet, right there. So that's, that's the overall, like, there's Growth Road, Hounslow, uh, th, these are all the different ways you can connect on to things. If you go up this way, there's Piches over here. So you can get onto the bypass there. That's how it kinda relates to everything in the area.
Marsha have a question?
I, I did. Um, I, I was wondering if Attorney Brugyard could, um, share with me, what was the assessment process that you used to determine that, um, there would, you're not gonna create any excess demands on the police, the fire, the school? What, how did you go about determining that?
Well, uh, basically, the, like, we've looked at other apartment complexes and the, and the impacts they've had. Uh, and this one, one is smaller than the Apple Ridge, Ridge Apartments. And so that's what, where it led us to that conclusion.
So you didn't speak with the, um, school superintendent or the police chief or anything about the number of families that would be moving in and, and how that would affect the number of kids in school or how it would affect, um, the police department or the fire department? I'm just curious. You didn't have any conversations with any of the leaders in the community?
I had conversations with the, the DPW, the water work, the fire department, uh, and, uh, not the police department, um, but that, that was, was my analysis.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Anybody else have questions at the moment?
Just one follow-up question. Are these going to be primarily one and two-bedroom apartments? Phil, are you going to have three apartment units? Do you know your configuration yet? Have you given any thought to that?
If I could kick this can to John Roke.
Okay, great.
Because he actually is going to use some of the same plan that they used up at Apple Ridge.
Okay.
Did John hear that?
Yeah, here, hold on. Let me, I was going to share a screen and do a different screen share first. Okay. Here's the, I got the plan up in front of you, so everybody can see it. What was the question again? Exactly what are you looking for?
My question was less about the configuration of the lot, but more about, did you plan on building, are these primarily two-bedroom apartments, one-bedrooms, three-bedrooms, mixture?
Oh, Phil, that is actually you. Like in the 30-unit building, like what's going to be the makeup of the apartments? Are they going to be mostly two-bedroom? Like is it going to be standard two-bedroom or is it going to be a mixture of two-bedroom and three-bedroom? I think that's three-bedroom, one-bedroom. That's what you're asking, is that correct?
Yes.
In terms of Apple Ridge, I believe those were all pretty standardized at two bedrooms, from what I remember.
That was my understanding as well.
And if we go with a similar layout, I mean, most, I would say the majority of them would end up being two bedrooms.
Okay.
There may be, like in the lower levels where you end up with mechanicals and laundry room and stuff like that, you may end up with some one-bedrooms. But generally, I think it would be two-bedroom, one-bedrooms. I don't know that you would run into a lot of three-bedrooms in it.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I'm just curious, if you're not quite sure with the configuration, of the configuration, or let me put it another term, how many one, two, and three-bedroom units you're going to have? How did you do a financial plan to say that you need 90 units to do this?
Well, fortunately, we both know Mr. Agnost quite well, and he's the one that owns Apple Ridge Apartments right now. And we went right to the well and asked the guy that's got a bunch of two-bedroom apartments right now. And he pretty much told us that you had to have 90 units because they couldn't pay the mortgage with 60. And also that he had a waiting list up there. And also that if you have 60, you can't afford onsite management. And he thought that having onsite management is very important, and having the 90 units gives us a manager onsite, full-time, 24/7. So basically, we took the input from the guy who's actually doing it right now.
So 30 extra units a month would churn out at 1,200 bucks a piece if I'm leaning on the conservative side? That's one hell of a management fee.
Yeah, well, I think what you need, I think what you need to do though is you need to multiply 190 or 160 by 90. Then you have to look at what, even if somebody puts 20 or 25% down, what the mortgage would be and what the mortgage service on that would be. And I think you get to where we're coming from. It's not, it's not the income coming in, it's the cost and the size of the mortgage. Roland, it's okay, I'm going to kick that can over to John Roke because he designed the parking lots, is that okay?
Yep, I got the layout that we've put together so far. I mean, basically, I have the emergency access going that way, but we have main access, we have basically a circular pattern. I have enough outdoor spaces to make up for the, you know, basically almost two spaces per unit, plus guest parking spaces throughout the development with a big, like basically there's a big green area in the center for amenities or like a little picnic shelter area or whatever you got going on. There's actually room around the outside edge of the whole thing for walk paths. And the way the contours run, everything runs down to this corner of the lot right now. So detention in that, we get all of our detention down in this corner where everything kind of naturally goes. And like Phil said, there'll be some drainage that goes into the street system for Province Street, but that'll be minimized by everything coming down, coming down this way. And when we redesign this to go over to Growth Road, I'll have to take a look at how that all works, but that connection. But that's kind of how the site was laid out and why we have the number of spaces we have. And we're definitely trying to account for some guest parking and make sure all the drainage is going to work when we get done.
I'm curious, when you said, when you indicated that the water is going to run into the street system? I'm not aware unless there's some kind of underground sewer system of any drainage system up on Province in that area. So along with the sidewalk, I'm kind of curious how that's all going to function?
There is city sewer, and there is city sewer, and there is city drainage.
And I think we're not looking, you know, what Phil said was, we're just the end of the driveway because it dips down, so the water's going to head that way. So it would make sense to put a catch base in there and tap into city drainage.
Yeah, and it goes uphill from Province Street, so we can take care of it and drain it back to our own detention point.
And in the center of that circle, between all the parking spaces, what's going to happen there?
I'm pretty excited to do like a village green there, Steve, with some of these shelters that John talked about, gazebos and such, playground, maybe half-court basketball, something that hopefully people wouldn't hurt themselves on, but a real nice village green type area. It really cries for that. And it would be people looking out at that, they would be looking out at a nice big green space. Because that is actually, John, maybe, can you do a quickie measurement on how big that village green would be?
Not easily with the way I have it right now. I could kind of approximate it on Google Earth, I guess.
So I mean, it's a couple, it's almost a couple of acres.
Yes, it appears to be fairly large.
It's a significant area.
If everything's scaled, like the buildings scaled.
Yep, the buildings are scaled and the parking spaces are scaled.
Three buildings in there, I mean, really close. So that to me indicates fairly large, and it would, it does spring for something like that.
Yes, and it used to be a gravel pit, so the drainage is very, very good. The soils can be moved around more or less easily. So it's really a perfect, perfect place for this.
Okay, any other questions at the moment? There being none, I would like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please raise your hand and wait for Dean to acknowledge you, and then you'll have an opportunity to speak and ask your questions. Could we turn?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one. I want to just inform the people that are on Zoom in the waiting room that if you'd like to speak, just put your cursor over the screen somewhere, you'll see a little thing about it, you can hit the button, just raise your hand. If you just click that, they will know that you want to speak. I have to already hang on just a second here. We're going to have Mr. Dofield is first.
Hi, can you all hear me okay? All right, I live, I live on Province Street, and I'm actually towards the stop sign that becomes 107 and intersects with Hounslow Ave. and South Main Street. So I know in the original proposal, people leaving the lot would have been encouraged to, I want to say take a left, would have gone, you know, directly by my residence. So I have a lot of concerns about that as it's come up, the whole situation about not having a sidewalk, you know, I walk my dogs, there is a hill there and cars come down fast on that hill, and so they don't always see us when we're backing out, when we're walking out. It's definitely, definitely a concern of mine additionally. I consider myself very fortunate to be able to take my dogs to the dog park. It's a great chance to meet responsible pet owners, people who are part of the community. And I just have concerns about this project in that I don't want the safety of, you know, myself on the street, pedestrians, and I don't want to compromise in any way the ability to use the dog park and other things that I consider very important to my lifestyle and to this community.
So right now, you're able to utilize access to the dog park without a sidewalk available to you?
I drive my dogs there, but it is, it's a hurdle being on a street without a sidewalk, for sure. None of the, none of the streets have a suitable sidewalk, except after you go a little ways down Hounslow Ave., there is a walk lane and a bicycle lane. But other than that, it's unfortunate. I'd like to add that a lot of people walk, what we call the Piches Road, but it's Hounslow Avenue. A lot of people exercise, ride bicycles, and walk animals on that road. And I think the increase in car traffic is really going to hinder the safety of those individuals. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, hey, Dofield?
Okay, may I just ask a question? It sounded like there was a second individual speaking. If that person could just identify themselves for the record.
Ellen Bean.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Alexander Stewart. I'm from Laconia. I currently live in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I'm here to speak against this project now. If anyone read, I did write a letter to the editor two weeks ago, so I'll basically read that off again. Regarding the zoning board exceptions that you guys need to make here tonight, I don't have any qualms over density and multi-use, multi-unit apartment buildings. But I want you to consider what we want to envision our town to have. What are the best neighborhoods that we create in this town? For me, they're walkable. They are connected to the town, which means that if there is traffic and there's pedestrian traffic along with it, then we are close knit. I want to feel humanity. I don't want us to be separated by cars, by accessways. And I feel that this is just like Apple Ridge or any other subdevelopments that we've seen in this country from the last couple of generations. We don't create a community that is, that's lively. We create a community that's disconnected. So I ask you, would you want to live here? Would you be, see this place as a place that you could call a home, not just an apartment? Could you see yourself raising a family here? Or would you want it to be houses, single-unit houses or multi-unit houses on the streets with sidewalks, downtown, close, urban? Otherwise, I would just hate to see Laconia continually develop suburban-type, car-dependent-only neighborhoods. So I ask you that. What would you like to see for this town? Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike. Alexander, you say you live in Portsmouth now. Do you live in Portsmouth because of the availability of jobs, the availability of affordable housing? What drives you to live in Portsmouth?
I live in Portsmouth because I work in the greater Boston area. And before living in Portsmouth, I lived in Coldbrook, New Hampshire for three years in northern New York. So I've seen in both. And before that, I lived in Beijing, China. So I've seen several different places. And I understand economic pressures are prevalent everywhere we go.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Next we have Peter Stewart.
Welcome, Peter.
Peter, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Peter, you have to unmute.
Can you hear me, folks?
Yes.
Okay, great. Old North Main Street, Peter Stewart. I know Phil and Brian, and these are good guys. I do have some concerns about the project. You know, I always ask myself, when a project comes along, what's it going to do for Laconia? What's it going to do for its residents? What is it going to do for its in-town neighborhoods? So that's sort of my backdrop. Phil mentioned impacts. He suggested that he didn't think there'd be any traffic impacts. And when Gail Ober asked the question, a specific question about traffic impacts, Phil said, oh, well, that's the planning board issue. I really think this is a zoning issue because density, which is what the variance is asking for, affects traffic. So I think you need to get that question answered. Schools, well, Phil doesn't think it'll affect schools. Well, let me ask you, what, how many kids do we think will inhabit this property? 90 kids at $15,000 a kid? What is the tax revenue estimated to be for the project? We need to know that. And finally, Phil mentioned the word affordable. Now, New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority has a definition for affordable housing. Does this meet the definition of affordable housing? And why us? Why Laconia? If this is such a great deal, you know, it kind of reminds me of the line from The Godfather when Vito says to Salazzo, "Why me? Why is this such a great deal for me?" I think we need to ask these questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I just want to remind people in the zone waiting area, if you wish to speak, just move your cursor over the screen, you'll see the raised hand. And you hit that, that means you want to speak. Current, I have no raised hands. Oh, hang on. Got one. Just, while we have a moment, I just want to remind. Just, while we have a moment, I just want to remind the board that we have sent you a number of emails and letters that we have received about this project. Seven, I believe it is. We got one from Mr. Rockwell. We have one from the Shusha on Edward Street. We have one from Herbert Dow. We have one from the Deserries. We have one from Ms. Kiddo. We have one from Alexander Stewart. We have one from the Davises, who did a petition with many of their names assigned to it. And we have one. I think that was it. So I just wanted to, again, remind you of those letters. I know you've read them. I just want to remind you that they are part of the record. Next up is Kevin E. O'Reilly.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. I live on Emerald Drive. My question is, you say affordable housing, is it going to be sold as individual units? Is it going to be rented? Is it going to be lower housing, lower section housing? Because last few years, we've had a lot of issues with homeless people, transient people, all around the city property adjacent to us on Emerald Drive in between Province Street. And I just think bringing in more people is going to bring in more traffic in the woods and more issues.
I think it's.
Us residents are going to have to deal with. Because there's a quiet neighborhood, and honestly, the dog park behind us causes a lot of noise. So I'm concerned that an apartment building will just be the same. So are they going to be sold? Are they going to allow to be subletted? How's this going to work for the units?
I do believe they're rented.
And.
And it says that at market.
Yeah, if I may, they're not affordable housing. They're mid-market apartments. They're not affordable housing, like the last speaker spoke about. We're not defining this by the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. This is not a low-income housing project. This is a market rent housing project that will be affordable for teachers, policemen, firefighters, nurses, and other well-paid professionals, construction workers, and factory workers. This, this is not a low-income project, and they will be rented.
Okay, Kevin. Okay, next please. Something you want to say that warps. At the moment, I don't have any other questions. Okay, to the public. If there's anybody else that wishes to speak, please find the right time and you can read and book there. Just a second. I'm going to go through the public and bring back to the board.
There are more hands.
Hi there. My name's Candace Davis, and I did submit a letter as well as a petition that you should have in front of you. But I just, I just wanted to touch on the, the cost for the apartments and, and just where the data is coming from, that, that market rate apartments are what we need here in Laconia right now. I just ask, as, you know, someone that is maybe lower to middle class or middle class, the people that I speak with, my peers, are looking at buying houses, not at finding apartments in the city. Also, I want to know where the jobs are that are going to bring these people in that want to live in these apartments. I, I don't see a lot of jobs here open in Laconia that would bring in additional people that would need these types of housing. I see the housing that we need as lower-income housing, you know, Section 8 housing. Those are the needs that I see. But I'm just wondering where the data is to support that these apartments are going to be wanted by policemen, firemen, you know, teachers. You keep quoting certain people, certain groups of people, and I just don't see that from, from speaking with my peers.
Okay, thank you. Next?
We have Mr. Doofield again.
Yes, Mr. Doofield.
This is Ellen Bean. Actually, we're sharing a computer. And I have real concerns about police involvement. When you have 90 families in a relatively small area, there will be an increase in crime. You can't avoid it. And I'd also like to point out that the Apple Ridge Apartments, you know, there are residential aides that live in those buildings and help monitor behavior. So of course, there's not going to be as much police involvement as there may be in a building that does not have anybody living there to monitor behavior.
I think part of, I just want to say, part of Attorney Brouillard's project scope was that there would be an onsite manager. Typically, an onsite manager lives onsite and is given an apartment, part of his or her salary benefits, however.
But that's only if approved for 90 units.
Well, that's if it, that's if it's approved for 90 units, yeah.
If, and, you know, they'll need it with 90 families living in a small area. And I just think we need something from the police to say that they have looked into this. They, yeah. There's so much crime, you know, small crime in Laconia. I just don't want it increasing.
Even crime. People have neighbor disputes.
Right.
Is that it, ma'am?
Neighbor disputes, domestic violence disputes, you know, they're all over Laconia. And when you have 90 families in a relatively small area, it will increase. And that's it.
You got a question?
So if there are less people living in Laconia, we have less problem?
Density issue.
It's a density issue. I mean, living, like, within a quarter of a mile of this place, of the proposed location, it really concerns me. You know, there'll be foot traffic, car traffic, and things are going to happen. As the other person said before me, you know, with the homeless population, I see them all the time walking around here. They have their backpacks and they're walking around. You know, they're not going to be able to afford these places.
Ma'am, do you think there's going to be anything positive come from this, that having people walking around? Let's say if they do, if they did approve for 90, that 90 families would bring in, since they're mid-level rent properties, that means they're going to have, you know, some kind of good paying job to be able to do that. Do you not think that that might bring in some extra spending money for the city? And the walking around of middle-class families and stuff might encourage less crime? And maybe that homeless people that like to reside in that woods behind Emerald Street and Spruce Street and all that might be discouraged because now you have a 90-year complex back there with all these other people and everything else living there? Do you think that might be a positive point for some of that?
Well, I think that's what we'd have to do some research on and not really just do it anecdotally.
Okay, is that it, ma'am?
That's it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? From the public?
Brian wants to talk here. And you got to talk.
How's this work? Okay. Let's see. My name is Brian Gilbert. I live on Edward Street. I've lived on Edward Street since 1978. Prior to that, I lived at 427 Province Road, Gilbert Block Company, since I was two. I'm 65 right now. So I've been on Edward Street 40 years. When the pits were the party pits, you know, I was, I was there. So I mean, I know the area, you know, and as good, there's not too many people that have been in that neck of the woods longer than myself. The tra, you know, so when they say traffic, I'm, so I turn left onto Province Road every morning and go on the other side of the bypass and go to work. I'm up and down Province Road four, six, eight times a day because I live on Edward Street. I haven't, this last summer, but for years, I would walk up into the woods, that 40 acres that the city owns for recreational. There was homeless people living up there, and I think that this project will cut down on that because there'll be, these people from these, these apartments would be walking out there, and they'd be like little policemen. And some of them will be policemen. And I think it'll, it'll put down this homeless stuff that worries the people in the Edward Street area and Province Road. Another tidbit of, of history on the piece of property is that when I, let's see, we purchased that piece of property because we did not want the city of Laconia to turn it into a landfill over 50 years ago. I, I was standing at the blockyard and this guy walks in the office, and he wanted to see my father. I was probably 12 years old. And, and my father says, what are you doing here? And he says, well, I'm here to talk to you about your, your pit down the road that we're going to buy and turn it into a dump. And we had already put up with the dump that's up on Morn Road. And so my father says, well, hang on a second. I'll be right back. I got to do something. But what he did was he went out the back door. He went over to his cousin's house, was the Gilbert that really owned it, and he bought it so it would not be a dump. So I think we did the people in the neighborhood a real big favor. And it's not a stinky dump full of rats like the one up on Morn Road was when I was a kid for 20 years. And I'll bet you, most of you people on this Zoom call right now have no idea that that went on. So you're welcome. Good.
We have Mr. O'Reilly again.
Okay, Mr. O'Reilly.
Hi, can you hear me again?
Yes, we can.
I usually don't like to divulge much information, but I've been in law enforcement for about 18 years now. I've been in Meredith for over 12 years now. And they had the same mentality when they built Crestview Apartments off of Boynton Road across the street from the Meredith Police Department. They're built geared towards police, fire, nurses, and they turn into Section 8 housing. And it takes a brunt of our caseload, and it will put more strain and impact on the local police department, more than you would know it. So I hope you guys take that in consideration, especially with the, the strain that the police department's under now. You know, they're generally undermanned and overpowered by the public. So hopefully that's something that we take into consideration because you put that many people in one tight area, there's going to be a lot of extra crime.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Last call?
Mr. Doofeld again.
Last time, Mr. Doofeld.
That was an error.
Okay. Last call to the public. Raise your hand.
Hang on. Ms. Davis once again.
Last time, Ms. Davis.
Thank you. I do want to just put out there that I, I thank Mr. Gilbert for purchasing the property and for it not being a, a landfill, as he had mentioned. But I do want to point out that I bought my house here four and a half years ago. Had it been a landfill, I would not have purchased property here, just as if there was a 90-apartment complex right across the street from my house, I would not have purchased this property. And I, I would like to see some proof that there wouldn't be a diminish, diminishment of our property values by adding this apartment complex right here. Again, this is a single-family residential area for the most part, especially up on this end of the street. A lot of us have children that play, you know, in our yards, and the traffic here is already very bad. We, this is supposed to be a no through street, Province Street, and we have to deal with cars zooming through here every day, all day long. Cars that are trying to get from 107 or Hounsell Avenue down to downtown Laconia. I follow them out of my driveway, and I see that they are not people that are accessing roads off of Province Street. They are just using it as a detour already. And so, you know, again, just in connection with my letter that I submitted, that is a huge concern for a lot of us, is that traffic impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who has not already spoken?
You have Ruth O'Hara.
Good evening. I live on Opal Lane in the cul-de-sac, so I abut the power lines. Actually, they go over my property. And I can look up to Scotia and Growth Road. So I have some real concerns about the plan to make that access. You're going to have approximately 360 people in there if you've got 90 apartments. That's an awful lot of cars coming and going, and that's an awful tight little area. So I want you to really give this some great consideration. I mean, that's a lot of people to put in a small area. That's just my two cents.
Thank you. Anybody else who has not spoken? I will be closing it down to the public. Going, going, gone. I have now closed it to the public. I'll bring it back to the board for further questions.
Um, yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I do want, taking up in the same vein that Peter Stewart left off, and I, I do, I would like to hear the applicants address something about the traffic. And I think they've done a good job by letting us know. When we got the plans, we did not realize that, that you were actually considering a second egress. I think that's a huge step in the right direction. But my concern is the intersection at 107 and 106 and, and South Main. And I, I just want to say that if I were to approve either the special exception or the variance, I would, or the variance especially, I would request that a traffic study be done.
And, and we would welcome that. It's just that we can't do a traffic study when we don't have an approval.
We know that. We know that. I, I know that anyway.
Yep.
See, because, Gail, the reason of that is, whoever Province you want, has quite a few concerns on it. And the amount of traffic as the main entrance and exit point for this apartment complex over that road would need to be looked at extremely harshly because of all the things that happen without an 90-unit apartment complex being on that road. There's already, I too live in that area, and I too have to pull down Province Road. I too have to look left. I too have to look left and wait for cars to make sure they're not sliding down the road. And I too have to watch all this. And as I drive up and down the road, I too also have to watch out for people walking along the road that doesn't have a sidewalk. So a traffic study in the least would be something no matter what would be required, I would hope.
Not a problem, but again, you know, if improvements are sought on Province Street and the main entrance is on Growth Road, it doesn't, that's kind of a disconnect.
Right.
Improvement. So we've gotta be wa- careful what we wish for.
Well, that's why I was asking. Because the other entrance wasn't, must be a
No, but I, I also think that there could be, again.
Hounzel is a much more flat.
Correct, but, but it could be that, that, that Province Street would be a fine one-way entrance in and the exit out would be Hounzel, and that could solve a lot of problems. But again, we, we don't disagree about a traffic study. So, but once we have a plan and we have a right of way, we can analyze all this.
Yep. No, I get it. I get it.
Yep. And then the only other question I'd like to ask the applicant to address is, and I'll preface this by saying recently I read Russ Timbo, who is a local economist, mentioned that there is a shortage of twenty-one thousand housing units in New Hampshire. This is not specific to Belnet County or Laconia. But could you please address the fact that if you were to add ninety units, do you think that the additional units, plus I understand that there's some expansion going on also up on Mile Hill, the second phase of your second one does?
Well, if you're talking about Mountain Lake Village, yes, hopefully we're going for final approval for that February second. But basically, I try to answer your questions about, I'd like to discuss trickle-down. These are gonna be brand-new, state-of-the-art, really nice, brand-new apartments. Now, if you're living in another apartment in town and you wanna upgrade your living situation, you could move into one of these apartments and that would leave your, that would leave the apartment that you're moving out of for someone else. So just as that they might be people moving in, there might be people that upgrade to a nicer place or a newer place. And, and I think that would do nothing but help the housing market and help the availability of apartments and help the ability of a variety of, of housing that's so sorely needed in town here. I hope that's kinda what you were asking.
And that's what I, that's what I wanted to have you address was that basically more supply may take some of the pressure off of demand and level out some of the soaring cost of living prices that we are seeing in the city.
Well, yes, and you know, just not to get too, too economist on you, but I mean, if you've got those apartments and there's ninety of them available and they're at X dollars, that kinda sets the, the high level of, of what the price can be. So depending on how old your other apartments are, that depreciates those apartments so that the prices could actually be, you know, stay down, if you know what I mean.
I do know what you mean.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. I can't hear him.
He's asking about property taxes.
Oh, okay.
We think it would probably be about a we think it would probably cost about fifteen million dollars to build it rolling. So I don't know what the assessor would come in at. But it would be between twelve and fifteen million dollars times whatever the tax, tax rate is, it would be a lot of money. And these are not subsidized. These are, these are gonna pay taxes.
Yep. Any other questions? Yes, Mike.
So to reiterate one more time, you're not aiming this at Section Eight. You're aiming this at what the market will bear.
This, yes, this is market rent apartments.
Any other questions? Any closing comments?
No, thank you for your time and attention very much.
Okay, I have my boy and closes. We'll all close this. And the board for discussion. Yes, sir. The planning.
Let me, I, just a couple of comments concerning some things that came up with, with public comments. First and foremost, the city of Laconia has plenty of capacity in its school system for additional children. If they were to be integrated in a project like the number of students within the Laconia School District is continually on a decrease. It goes down on a two percent every year. There could be two or three students per classroom add and without adding teachers, without adding desks, without, you know, those kinds of things. We have the capacity in the city for additional school children. However, having said that, apartments generally do not generate school-aged children. There may be younger children. The people obviously have, and then as they become toddlers and then preschool, they will move to some other type of housing, single-family. The so I just, I just want the board to be aware of that. Comment is made about how do we know that we need these units in the city? Two years ago, we went through the master plan process for our land use chapter. And the number one priority within the master plan was additional mid-priced houses. We don't need to do anything to generate high-priced housing. City does that very well, all in tone, you know, long waterfrock, etc. We don't have to do anything to encourage that or to make it happen. It happens. City has also seen a number of so-called Section Eight or other types of something built in the city over the past seven years. Could we use more? Probably. Is it politically correct or, you know, desirable by some folks to have more? The answer is probably no. But that's a separate issue, a separate discussion. These are none of the above. These are not luxury. These are not subsidized. These are mid-priced. If they were single-family homes, you'd be looking at both starter homes that are two fifty to three fifty in price. Those kinds of things. But I know for some people, when you say two fifty to three fifty as a starter home, their heart starts to do this. And I get it. But that's what it costs these days for a starter home. It's a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot construction, approximately, and up just to build a unit of housing. That does not include land. That does not include landscaping, paving driveway, or any of those things. Just construct a unit of housing, a hundred and fifty dollars square foot on a standard fifteen hundred square foot house. That's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars just to build the house. Nothing else around it. Wow. Or the roads, or any of those things. So that's the reality of the situation. That's mid-priced houses. Two fifty, let's say, four hundred thousand, mid-priced house. Apartments in this area that are close to mid-price would be twelve hundred to fourteen hundred dollars a month. And again, I know that there are people who say, oh my God, how can anybody afford that? The people running around town, we call homeowners, and their backs are are not the people who live in these apartments. That's guaranteed. But there are a number of people in this community that drive long-distance to go to work. And they are looking for better places to live. And if we can get some jobs located here, then we can have the people here as well. I don't know what's gonna happen at the hospital in the long term, but there are a number of high-paying jobs, good-paying jobs at the hospital. A lot of entry-level, these folks make forty, forty-five, fifty thousand dollars a year. They can't buy a house. For two reasons, in this community, there aren't any low-priced, mid-priced houses available. Or very, very few. And they're just starting out. It's not what they, you know, they got student loans, etc., etc. It's not what they're looking for. But they will look for a car. So I just want the board to keep those things in mind. We have had a couple of discussions with the applicants concerning traffic. The idea of converting the closed emergency access to a complete regular full-time in-and-out came from us. It's the only thing that makes sense because it spreads the traffic out to houses avenues where you can go right or left. You can go to Gilbert or to the bypass, or you can go back to one oh seven and go to the bypass. It spreads the traffic out, and that's a very desirable thing to do. And I, I got one other comment on Hounzel Avenue. It's an industrial park. We are trying to get the streets to move in as readily as we can. Is it easy to get that to happen? No. But we are trying very hard to get that couple of the past year, build buildings and move in. There will be more traffic on Hounzel just because there will be more buildings, industrial buildings, there'll be more jobs down there. So this idyllic, you know, dog run or pedestrian jog run that we perceive it to be right now, maybe shortly, anyway. And I don't wanna be a downer and I don't wanna be, you know, alarmist. That's the reality of the situation. But Hounzel was built and designed to handle much more traffic than it is currently, you know. It's current. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may add to that, I've myself and my wife, we've always keep an eye out once out in the marketplace ourselves and stuff. And it's, we found it amazing that people want to move into an apartment complex of some sort. There's really nothing other than the applewood. I'm not aware of another apartment complex around that you would wanna move to if you don't want a condo because new condos are even harder to come by, that are affordable to buy. So it left you with, if you're older and you don't wanna live in your house no more
Because of the snow and the upkeep and stuff. Having a nice apartment to go to that you can afford. It's not a bad thing, but
as we've looked around, there's none in Laconia that please someone tell me where one is.
Because we've yet to find them.
And so something has to happen somewhere in order to break that cycle. I'm not saying whatever. I'm just trying to say a fact of what I've seen. You know, with my searching for the housing market within Laconia. What happens in the surrounding towns doesn't affect me because I'm not wanting to leave the area. But in order to wanna stay and live and play in Laconia, there has to be the appropriate housing for Laconia. So, you know. And that's called developing our future. Because currently if we don't change and add some new stuff, people are gonna continue to live because there's no place to live. Not that suitable living that they're looking for.
So that's my thought. I welcome anybody else's thoughts.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
You know, when, when I first heard about the application, I would say, no way. I would never increase the density from six per acre to nine per acre. But visiting the site, it's almost like they have thirteen acres with the cemetery next door and the power line, it sort of makes the property bigger than what it actually is. I don't wanna see it become a ghetto of content process by any means, but that's something for the planning board that they have certain amenities. Like John was saying, a walking trail, a playground for the kids, possibly swimming pool and tubs. But I'm not sure what their plans are, but if we do think about approving, I would like to say, make it a hundred and eighty bedrooms maximum. We don't want ninety-three bedroom units. So if they're all two-bedroom or some ones and some threes, say a hundred and eighty maximum is probably appropriate.
A hundred and eighty-three bedrooms?
A hundred and eighty bedrooms. So ninety-two bedroom units comes with one eighty and I wouldn't say, let's not build ninety-three bedroom units because it would increase the density overwhelmingly.
Yes.
You know, they could build sixty units without any variance, just saying, okay, let's build sixty units up here. How much harder is another thirty units gonna be on the property in these surrounded areas? I feel for the people in the neighborhood and would like to appease them hopefully by having the main entrance toward, what was that, Road Street? Possibly the entrance to Province Road could be one-way in and no exit there. I, I'm not sure what this, that's like I say for the planning board later. But I'm kinda leaning to approve this just because the open area around the property itself makes it bigger than what it is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, myself, to be known with a bedroom. Because that, that brings a new twist to what what is a better reality to what, then I can configure whatever the heck I wanted out of the ninety units, but to a maximum of that. I'm like that. Anybody else?
Yep.
I, I actually agree with both of what you said. Rather than I, I would, I would wanna give the builders a little more flexibility. And I only say that because I mean, I, it's a novel concept that you've come up with with the hundred and eighty bedrooms. However, having said that, it probably, I, I would, I would give him more flexibility and go to one ninety. And the only reason why I say that is because sometimes you have like, like Attorney Brouillard said earlier, you've got laundry rooms, you've got different kinds of access points, entrances, exits that you don't know. And I wouldn't wanna hold it fast to that. I mean, you know, that's my only concern, but it is a novel concept and I like it, Mike. I'm definitely leaning towards approving this. Now that I know that we're gonna get a traffic study, I know the full planning board is going to look at this and they're gonna look at it hard because this is a very big development for the city of Laconia. I definitely know that we need the living space. We need places for people to live. Even if you pick up the newspaper, I'm not much for Craigslist, but even if you pick up the newspaper, there are no apartments for rent. You can't buy a house around here for less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. People can't afford to work here if they can't afford to live here. It's a chicken or an egg. I know some people would rather see the jobs. We all like to see jobs, but I think you're more inclined to see I think you're more inclined to see people develop and especially in our industrial park if they know that there is some reasonable housing for the people that they're going to hire. This has held back some commercial and industrial development and manufacturing development within our community because of a lack of affordable housing. Not affordable, but a lack of market-rate housing. It's very hard to pay somebody forty thousand dollars a year or fifty thousand dollars a year, which is a good entry-level wage, and then tell them they need to come up with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to even live remotely within the area. So I think the economic time is right. This is certainly consistent with our master plan. I think the site is a good one. The only thing that was keeping me up at night Um, the only thing that was keeping me up at night was the one entrance in and out. And now that I understand that the applicant is going to work with the planning board and perhaps developing a second egress and entrance and configure it the way the planning board and they decide to configure it. I'm very comfortable with this.
You know, yeah, that's, that's a very good input and with Mike, I do believe is still on the planning board. Uh, he's acknowledging, yes, that he's going to be able to take a lock because I'm thankful he's here on the zoning board. And so he'll be one who can take a lot of the concerns that we discussed here on the board. He'll, he'll understand those concerns firsthand when he goes back to the planning board and gets an actual look at all these different, uh, approaches. And if I may add one other thing, after the last two years of, uh, having tent city in woods but next to my house or having apartments, I think I'll take apartments over a tent city anytime. Since I just erased the videos of the tent city that was in there myself. Uh, so I do look forward to another spring, summer and fall of tent city. Uh, until we get the city immobilized again to break it up. Um, so. Anybody else have anything else to say?
I do.
Mike?
You know, back in the day when I was working for my uncle's canoe club in the U S Navy, oh, I moved down to Norfolk, Virginia. And on Tidewater Ty- Tidewater Drive, I found a set of apartments that looked just like what these are. And I had a paying job, I had a wife, I could live inside. I had an apartment. It was accessible, available to shopping, to my job, to everything else I had, was necessary. And I appreciated living inside. And I can certainly see where our housing stock here in Laconia is abysmally aged. And it's hard to want to get excited about some house that's been recycled twenty-seven million times. Maybe it'd be nicer to live in a nice apartment. And so in this here, once again, with the separation of Saint Lambert's with the city property up above the power lines, I can't see how this would be a drawback to the community. Certainly there are shopping opportunities at the Vista, which are closer to the people here than the people who walk down from Blueberry Lane. So there's accessibility for wh- what's needed in a community here, they have access to it. And once again, jobs and enticing businesses to come here and pay an actual living wage, more than just a living wage, more than a minimum wage, a wage that you can afford to live inside with. So I think this is a, uh, I feel this is probably a positive spark for the area.
Any other comments from the board? There being none, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Um, I'll give it a whirl. Now, we're only motioning on the special exception first, correct?
Yep, the variance would prove unnecessary if they don't get the multifamily. And the special exception should go first.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Director?
Yes. I got that one right this time.
That's what I understood. Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve the special exception for Z O two zero two zero dash zero one zero eight special exception for Del R Gilbert and Son Block Company Incorporated to build ninety units in three buildings on, um, four twenty-seven Province Road. The requested use is specifically authorized in this chapter. The requested use, the requested use will not undo, will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. I'm going to condition this that there is a traffic study done and knowing full well that it's going to go to the planning board for a full site plan review. I am comforted in the fact that we have that. Uh, the requested use will not overload any public water drainage sewer, any other municipal system, nor will there be any increase in stormwater runoff to adjacent properties. Um, the requested use will not create excessive dan- demand for municipal police, fire protection schools or solid waste disposal services. Any provisions that are set forth for the use in this chapter are fulfilled. It is, it is within the realm of what we, what we're looking for. The requested use will not create hazards to the health, safety or general welfare of the public nor be detrimental or out of character with the adjacent neighborhood. There are multifamily, there is another large, larger multifamily uh, unit in two buildings just down the road on South Main. So this is not unheard of in this neighborhood. Um, the proposed location is certainly appropriate for the requested use. And the requested use is very consistent with the spirit and intent of this ordinance and the master plan.
We have a motion?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair? Can I just clarify? When, uh, Gail just made the motion, she did mention four twenty-seven Province Road. That's the address of the owner. The property address is just tax map and lot only because there's nothing there. It doesn't have a street address, but it's Province Street.
Did you get that, Gail?
Uh, I did sort of, do we?
The address, there is no address for this yet. So it's only, the address will be used as a tax, tax map lot, et cetera, et cetera.
Oh, okay, so tax lot four sixty-three dash one eighty-eight dash five.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion, we have a second actively, Mike?
I will second that.
Okay. Discussion of the motion.
Gail mentioned that we got to do a traffic study, but we didn't mention maximum bedrooms.
Oh.
When, when it goes to the special, for the variance?
That's a variance, that's a density issue.
Okay, thank you.
All we're doing is saying the ninety units is irrelevant. This is just saying that we will allow multifamily units to be built, that's the special exception. Okay, the ninety units is irrelevant right now. That will be next. Okay, so we have a motion, we all clear on what's doing it? And that's based on the condition of having a traffic study done and acceptable by the, uh, planning department? Uh, right, Gail?
Yep, yeah, that's all.
The outcome of the traffic study is acceptable by the planning board.
And then that's everything along Province Street that we need to worry about. And that's, that's what I'm convinced of, yes.
Okay. So we have a second. All right, I'll call the roll. Uh, Mr. Fed?
I vote in the affirmative that we accept this, uh.
Okay. Uh, Mike? Roland?
I favor the motion.
Gail?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay, so the special exception passes. Okay, now that allows us to do the variance. Do we have a motion on the variance?
I'd like to make a motion that we application Z zero twenty twenty dash zero one oh seven for tax map number four sixty-three dash one eighty-eight five in the RG zoning district off of Province Street, Laconia. This is a variance from Article two thirty-five, Section thirty-three, Table two. Is a
Pardon me, just for a second, Mike, I'd hate to disrupt you. Is this for approval or denial?
Oh, this will be for approval.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, we're looking to permit nine acres, nine units per acre as opposed to six per, units per acre that are currently allowed in the RG zone. And we're doing this to allow for the construction of a ninety unit conventional market price apartment, apartment complex. Should I read through this or should I?
You want to make the motion, uh, as presented by, presented by the applicant?
And listed in the attachment for their variance?
Yes, in the attachment portion of their variance. Yes, you can do that.
And we'd like to put the condition on it that we limit the, uh, bedrooms in the project to a hundred and eighty or one ninety?
It's your motion, Mike, but I'd like to give him a little bit of flexibility.
Even though we're not going to have a plethora of three bedroom apartments here?
Well, even if you gave it one ninety, the most you could have is, 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 is what? A ten? And there's got to be some one bedrooms in there because he's got some other things. I just don't want to, I just don't want to over, I just don't want to strap the applicant too much that when it comes to building it, he has to come back to us. But you ma- it's your motion and you do what you feel is right.
I'll make that number one ninety if that's acceptable to the board.
It is to me.
And is there anything else we're going to condition?
Traffic study and bedroom.
That's on the one before.
The traffic study's on the one before. And for the planning board, I, as a side note, I don't know if it's a condition, but a side note that, uh, planning board get a copy of our discussion. So they'll understand all the concerns. Not that they wouldn't anyway, but to make that part of their package.
Feel comfortable?
Okay, so we have a motion with a condition, max one ninety bedrooms.
One ninety.
And, uh, so we're looking for a second.
Hold you for a second.
So Mike? Seconded it. Discussion, we discussed it, everything settled. All right, I'll call the roll. Mr. Fed?
Vote to accept this?
Uh, Roland? Mike?
Favor the motion.
Gail?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Varyance passes with the conditions.
Could I be excused for a moment, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'm going to, uh, take the board to break, that's all right? For, uh, a four minute break?
That shouldn't be too much longer. Now, we have one big application. Shit. Oh, come on. Damn it.
We're, we're ready, and, um, just remind everybody you're on mute right now, so if you need to speak, unmute yourself.
Okay, we're gonna call the, uh, meeting back to order. Thank everybody for your patience. And let me find my agenda. Hopefully I didn't throw it away. There you go. Found it. Next up is going to be, uh, application Z zero, uh, Z O two zero two zero dash zero one one zero, variance fifty eight, Edgewater. African, there's a question of variance from Article Six, Section two thirty five dash thirty five B to allow for the addition of a twenty four by twenty four garage. If the applicant is here.
I am here, yes.
Okay, go ahead and introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we can help you.
My name, well, thank you. My name is Dave Varney, and this is my wife Carol sitting next to me. And, uh, we're planning on, uh, moving to Laconia very soon. We want to move into a home on Edgewater Avenue uh, that we own. It'll be our retirement home. And we'd like to, uh, be sensitive to the history of the home because it's the oldest home on the street, built in eighteen fifty. Actually, it was still the town of Meredith when that house was built, so. Um, so we'd, but we'd like to bring it up to, uh, the twenty first century standards, and, uh, to do that, we need to add a, a garage to the side of the house. There is no current garage, so that's where we're at. Rich Ellis from Treason Builders has, uh, drawn up all the details, and I'm gonna turn the time over to him to, uh, explain exactly what we're doing, so.
Thank you. Okay, I'm here. Am I here?
Yes.
And I can share my screen? Can I share my screen with you guys?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Alright, so here's the property. This is the Varneys' property right here. Here's the existing barn. And we, I've marked up this plan, apologizes of the faded nature, but here's the new garage attached to the existing barn. Uh, the current barn is thirty two feet off the property line. I should have had my seventh grader do the math for me because we're actually seeking only a two foot variance, not a four foot, as I indicated on our application. I have a front elevation of what the proposed addition would look like to the existing barn. This would be a s- the side elevation view. Uh, we have a picture, I have a picture of the property here for you. Uh, that's the existing shed which will be removed with, as part of this project. However, I got a better view that shows the proximity to the neighbor. You can see that there's quite a bit of difference there. And the Varneys also have a, have approval from this neighbor for this project. They're in agreement with this, with this variance. So compared to your previous applicant, we are, this is a pretty simple, simple application here. Again, we, uh, we have a ten foot requirement on the setback, and we're looking to impede that only by two feet. So we'll end up with an eight foot setback when we're done. We looked at what we could do to stay within the setback, and we would, we would have had to, uh, get into the existing barn, which we really don't want to touch. Um, the house has been modified. I don't think I have a good picture of that, but the, the existing house has been connected to the barn, so that, that barn is no longer usable um, as a garage. And the driveway actually, um, would lend itself to this, this new garage just fine. As you can see in that picture. So that's what we're looking to do.
Where Edgewater is again, I'm just momentarily ignorant.
Right off from, uh, right near Peachy Park, there's a little, a U-shaped street that goes in next to Peachy Park.
I've got the larger tax map up here. If that helps you.
Oh, thank you.
Any questions?
Do we have any questions of the applicant?
I, I do, Mr. Chair. I'm having a few technical difficulties, but can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, are you gonna tear down the little shed?
Uh, the little shed's gonna go away. Somebody, somebody wants it, I'm gonna give it to them.
Oh, okay, so you're basically just looking to build within that width footprint of the little shed and come out? Or do you need to go further towards the trees on your neighbor's land?
Uh, well, it'd be, uh, on the neighbor's land, there would be a two foot encroachment, on, not on his land, but on our, uh,
I meant, but there are a row of pine trees there. Are you closer to those, or are you staying within the same area that the, um, that the little shed is in?
Correct. The garage would be right at the end of the paved driveway that you see there.
Okay.
So it would be a little bit closer to the pine trees, that's correct.
It would be a little bit closer to the pine trees, okay?
Well, it looks like the shed is approximately two feet into that side setback as it is.
That's right.
So you would not really be going any further than what that shed is into the setback.
That is correct.
If, if that's what your contractor said.
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
Who's saying that's correct? Mr. Varney or, or the contractor?
Both, we both are, yes, contractor.
Okay, so we we have a meeting of the minds on that one.
That's right.
Okay, and, and then my, my other question, Mr. Chair, is, um, is there a reason that you can't build this twenty two feet across and stay within the, uh, setback?
I think the standard garage width for a two car garage is, uh, uh, twenty four feet. It's pretty tough to get a narrower garage than that.
Is, is it, okay, I, I, that I will defer to my, to my chair who is in the construction industry. He probably knows that better than me. That was my only question, was that, was whether the shed was gonna stay and whether there was a reason that you had to build it uh, twenty four feet, not twenty two feet.
Twenty four feet is the optimum, Gail.
Then I'm, then I'm, then that's what I needed to know.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wish to speak for or against this application. Please raise your hand, find it on your screen, and touch it with your, uh, pointer, and wait for the planning director to recognize you.
If I could ask the contractor to, uh, stop sharing for a moment, please? Thank you. I, I do not have any hands up.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the public one more time, and then we're gonna move on in life.
There we go, sorry. Mr. Hamel.
Mr. Hamel, if you'll unmute your mic and tell us who you are.
My name is, uh, Ken Hamel, and I live at sixty eight Edgewater. And, uh, just wanted to let you know, it doesn't affect my property at all, and, um, I'm all for it.
Do you live next door to him?
Right next to him, it's sixty eight.
So that the garage would be closest to your property?
Right.
Okay.
I'm the only one affected, I think, out of, uh, out of all the neighbors, I'm the only one who, who would be affected.
You're the one who has pine trees on the property line?
Yep.
Okay, thank you for your input. Anybody else from the public wish to speak?
I don't have any other hands.
That the records indicate, no one else from the public wish to speak for or against this application, therefore I bring it back to the board. Any further questions? Any closing comments?
I don't think so.
With that, I'm gonna close it to the public altogether, bring it to the board for discussion.
I don't see any issues, Steve, uh, Mr. Chair, because the two foot encroachment is really nothing compared to the large space between the neighbor's house. Like another lot, and be, before the neighbor's house starts. So it's, it's not gonna look intrusive to the neighborhood.
And if I'm, if it's not an optical illusion, it looks like there's a, uh, another pine tree of some sort gonna be right next to the garage, so it would block the view of any of that anyway. Between all them pine trees. But anybody else have any questions?
No, I asked the questions I needed answered and.
Any discussion? Your head shaking from left to right indicates no. If there's no other discussion, might go ask for a motion?
I'll make a motion here for application here. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to accept the, uh, application for a variance. Z zero two zero two zero zero one one zero for fifty eight Edgewater Drive Tax Map, three ninety three sixty eight dash seven in the RS zone. We're here looking for a variance from Article Six, six two thirty five, the zoning ordinance to and I'm gonna attach the garage of which it will impact the side setback by two feet. So and the reason that we're not making it smaller is because it's for a standard sized garage, and that's how they come. So granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the encroachment is slight, and it's not impacting the general public, and we're trying not to get into, uh, remodeling a historic, existing historic barn. Um, spirit of the ordinance will be reserved, the, observed, because the majority of the footprint is within the requirement where and we have good access points. The building is back from the road. And once again, we're only impacting the side setback by, um, two feet, of which the neighbor has said it would not be a problem. It would be aesthetically pleasing and an affordable design. You allow the owners to utilize the existing driveway and, uh, create some storage for their vehicles. The design and the value of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because the design and layout would be keeping with the neighborhood. There'd be a removal of an older shed. And it will, um, consider it would be an improvement of the property and um, add value to it. Um, this really isn't on hardship, the, the proposed use is a reasonable one. Because it is, uh, once again, not impacting anything else, it's, uh, allowing these good people to, um, create a little bit more living and storing space. And is there anything else I need to cover the hardship in that, it's?
Good, good, so we got a motion? We have a second? Discussion of the motion? Mike?
Uh, motion to, uh, accept that motion, I, um, vote to accept it.
Mike? Gail?
Yes.
Roland? And Steve approves. Motion passes. Enjoy your garage.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright. Uh, we're moving right along. Okay, we're going into new business, new applications. These were all carryovers from the last meeting, so we're now moving into the next section, public hearing. The next application is Z O two zero two zero dash zero one one four, it's a variance, five personage drive. African, there's a question of variance from Article Six, Section two thirty five dash thirty five B to allow for this construction of a twenty eight by thirty five foot steel garage. Is the applicant with us? If so, unmute and introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we might help you. Hello, Mr. or Mrs. Applicant? Okay. Unmute yourself, please.
Here we go. Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Ah, nice. My name is Daniel Brothers, I'm here with my wife Elizabeth Brothers. And, uh, we are trying to get a variance for a twenty eight by thirty five steel garage. Um, it meets the setback, the side setback to the road. Um, it encroaches our other setback by two and a half feet. Uh, that's why we have to get the variance. Um, we have a heavily wooded area on my neighbor's side. We only have one neighbor that would be seeing it, but it's a heavily wooded area, whereas they probably wouldn't see it in the summer at all. Um, and it'd be the same color as our house. So, yeah.
So it looks like you just got a corner of the garage?
Yep.
That goes into the setback?
Yes.
And for, if I'm looking at everything correctly, why can't you tweak the garage two feet to not be an issue?
Because we, uh, we already have a, we, we built a, a lean to that was, um, already permitted, and for it to be exact with that, so it looks uniform, that's how it makes it kick over that two and a half feet, because that's that's how it makes it kick over that two and a half feet, because that's just turned a little bit, so if it was off, it would be, it just wouldn't match, you know what I mean, I'm having the fronts straight.
And doesn't come up, like it's a steel building?
I guess I don't see the lean-to, so that's why I was...
Oh. Yeah.
That's why I asked, all I see is woods.
Oh, yeah, there's a permitted, about four years ago, we built the lean-to. It's a, it doesn't look like a lean-to looking down on it, obviously, it looks like a barn, but it isn't. It's an open-fronted thing for some sand that I put inside there and mulch.
It doesn't even show on the picture, so I'll have to take your...
Mr. Chair, if you look at the diagram, there's a, you can see the white roof line, you should have two photos there.
Yes, you're talking about that one?
That, that's the one he's referring to. That's the, you're seeing a portion of the roof.
So... I guess I have to go back and ask the same question because it appears that there's room to rotate it unless that's your entrance to the lean-to.
The face of the lean-to is gonna match the face, the side of the garage.
Or the angle?
Yeah, and if I, if I cockeyed the garage, it just wouldn't look right as a straight line, you know what I mean? I kinda wanted to keep it really uniform on the fronts of it. So it'd be more aesthetically pleasing, you know, if I, if I cocked it over that two and a half feet, it wouldn't be parallel with that lean-to.
May I ask, instead of rotating it, could you just draw it forward? Did you need to keep it in the same orientation so that the south side of the lean-to, or north side of lean-to matched the south side of the new steel building, couldn't it just be drawn forward?
Well, I can't really move it that way because it has to be seventy-five feet from the road, which the front of the lean-to is exactly it.
In other words, you can't move it to match the rears.
Right.
Because then you'll have a front.
Oh, I wasn't talking about moving it that far, I mean, maybe just that two feet. Looks like it's there. Whatever.
It's just the back left corner that's in two and a half feet.
Yeah, it's within our land.
And you have a fence down the edge of Parade Road anyways, don't you?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
You have a fence down along the edge of Parade Road?
Yeah.
One oh six?
Yeah.
So it's not in direct view of the road anyways?
No, because I have a line of trees with the fence too.
It's in a wooded area. We can't hear you.
You're muted. Just unmute your mic.
I hear nothing.
Hello?
Hold on.
There you go. Okay, my question is, are you tearing down this two-car garage that's already there?
No, that, just a lean-to that I have, I have mulch and sand in, I'm leaving that there and I'm building it right behind it.
Okay. That takes the only thing about that, I noticed about that piece of land is it's kind of, it's narrow, but it's long, so...
Exactly. And that's the only place I can build it is on that, that one straightaway, you could call it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Not a problem.
Any other questions at the moment? Yeah?
Yeah, I have a, I have a more big-picture question. You want to work on equipment and trucks, what kind of business are you operating?
I have a small landscape company.
You have a small landscape company?
Yes.
Okay, and I guess, so you don't have a salt storage shed, what you store in that shed to lean-to is alone and...
Yeah, it's like sand for the winter and then I put mulch in it in the summer.
And plow as well, because you've got plow.
I'd like to put my plow trucks in that steel garage.
Okay, I, this isn't what's in front of us, you're looking for a side setback, and I guess I, I guess I have to address this more to, to the planning staff. Is this kind of operation that it doesn't say, it says it's not allowed in rural route two? That's what I don't understand, it seems to be a small commercial operation.
I have all the paperwork saying I'm allowed to do it.
And if they say it's okay, do you see my question is, is you're in a, you're in this...
I'm the rural, in rural residential and I'm within my guidelines to run my company with one.
Okay, all right, then, then I guess, then I guess I have no more questions, I was just looking at the big picture of what it was you were doing and whether the use was even allowed, much less, much less a garage to work on your equipment.
Oh, yeah, plus I have an instant pop-up garage that I can't wait to tear down and throw in the garbage. Lawnmowers and whatnot in.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please locate the raised hand and tap that so that the planning director may acknowledge you and then allow you to speak. That the record indicate, no one from the public, raise their hand, so no one wishes to speak. Therefore, I bring it back to the board. Any further questions? Yeah? Yeah?
Nope.
There being none, any closing comments? From the applicant?
Oh, I'm good.
With that, I'm gonna close it to the public altogether, bring it to the board for discussion.
It doesn't seem unreasonable to me, it'd be most perfect if it could be just aligned without having to go into the setback, but being as what it is. I don't, I don't see any problems.
Yeah, I mean, I drove out there and it's, he's in a pretty wooded area. I looked, I just drove by the front of the house, it's pretty wooded out there. I guess if the use is allowed so far with the planning department, then I don't have much of a problem with a small encroachment in setback. It's a narrow lot. I will give him credit for that, it's a deep lot, but it's oddly shaped.
Yep.
Wait, I, I, he's muted in your...
He's asking for very little here, and I can understand his wanting to have the buildings in a line because if you're ever backing up a trailer, you know if you have a different angle, all of a sudden you're hitting something when you should be going straight, so I could understand why he would like to build it that way. He's asking for very little, so I don't see a problem. I can make the motion that we approve. Application Z oh twenty twenty dash zero one one four on tax lot map fourteen dash one five four dash seven for a two-and-a-half-foot encroachment to the right of, not right-of-way setback rules. Because granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. It would, next to the existing structure, be lined up with the existing structure that's already there. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed because it's not impending on anybody else's property and not, not into the setback in a big degree. The values around the property would not be diminished at all because the building is actually an improvement to the property and helps neighbor's property values by, he would be able to clean up his lot and keep his equipment inside the building. And the proposed use is very reasonable because it fits into the narrow lot properly.
We have a motion? We have a second? Roll. Discussion of the motion? Everybody in line? All the, all the, roll? There's no discussion of the motion, we have a second, we had everything, sorry. Myself. I will call the roll. Yeah?
Uh, no.
Uh... Mike? Okay. Mr. Foot?
I approve the motion.
Roland? And Steve? No. Motion passes three to two. You have your garage.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have next on the agenda? Is this? On page Steve? Bam. Application Z zero two zero two zero dash zero one one five variance. Thirty-two Pearl Street. Applicant has requested a variance from Article six, section two thirty-five dash thirty-five B to allow for the replacement of a sixteen-by, sixteen-deck with a sixteen-by-sixteen-foot bedroom addition. The applicant, please come and unmute yourself and introduce yourself for the record. I have a Dan's Galaxy.
No, he's coming up now.
That's the last one, okay. Jeff McDonald.
Okay.
Are you there, Mr. McDonald? Okay. And if you need to unmute yourself, sir. Good. Good evening, Mr. McDonald. Can you hear us? We cannot hear you. You have muted yourself.
There we go, there we go.
Now we can hear you now.
Thank you, guys.
How were you tonight?
Very good, very good, been watching for a while.
Yeah, I hope it was entertaining.
It was. Yeah, some of the local contractor lived in Laconia for many years and I live over in Tilton currently. These people contacted me, they're an elderly couple and just moved into Laconia from Alton, I believe. And they bought a big property on Pearl Street and they, they would like to have a main floor master bedroom just because of their age, I believe. And the existing deck, we come to find out would have, needed to be redone anyway, so we decided that would be a good area.
And this is gonna go since it's the same square footage of the deck?
Yes, yes.
So the deck and already goes in?
Yes, the deck was already, when I applied down to Laconia, they were really nice and sketched it out for me and said that existing property sort of already goes into the side setback there.
Yeah, so, so what I guess we're doing is we're adding to the non-conformity?
We're not adding anything, we're just gonna remove the sixteen-by-sixteen deck and do a, a new little foundation bedroom right on the main floor for them.
Okay. Then to the staff, why does he need a variance if there's already a structure there? Well, no, I was asking my staff, you know, like Dean, Karen.
Karen and those people said it would be pretty straightforward, but I should apply.
It's increasing the bulk of the non-conformity, the deck is a small, low structure, whereas they're creating living space.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify. Okay. I saw it, I mean, I know where the deck is, it doesn't, it doesn't really even stick out beyond the side of the house, it's, it's, it's...
No, you, you wouldn't even notice it from the road, I don't think you'll even notice it.
I pulled into the driveway and I had to go on the other side of the driveway to even see the deck. It's a tight lot, it's, it's an old part of the city, it's, it's a non-conforming lot. I, I don't see a problem with this, if you stay within the, if you stay within the footprint of the deck.
Yes.
You have no problem with me.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant?
From the iteration here where I'm looking at this picture that comes in with a building photo.
Would you unmute yourself?
When I'm looking at this here, at this picture, this deck would be on the backside of this picture, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Mike, it's where they see where it says WDK?
Yup.
In pink, it's, it'll be right there, you can't even see it from the front of the screen.
It's like in an L-section of the house, yeah.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please find the little raised hand icon and push it and now we're turning. You're muted, Steve. You're muted. That the record indicate no one from the public wished to speak for or against this application, I bring it back to the board for any further questions?
None.
Any closing comments from? Any closing comments from the applicant?
No, thank you, guys, for your time.
With that, I'll close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion.
I, I can't hear him.
It seems reasonable to me and when you look at it and the layout of it, it doesn't stick out past what already exists as a part of the main house anyways. My inclination is to be to bring it into conformance, but I understand where it is.
Yeah, I went by there. There's no way, the whole house is out of conformance. It's just a tight neighborhood. Um, you wouldn't be able to even see it from the road. We couldn't see the deck. We, I had to do a double swing because I completely missed the deck. I don't even think it's gonna be visible from the street, to be honest with you. Um, it's just a big house on a small lot built sometime around a hundred and fifty years ago. It's the only way I could describe it.
Okay, any other discussion? There being none, like to get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair. Um, I made a motion that we approved. Um, zoning board application Z O two zero two zero dash one one five um, for, uh, James R. and Lucretia M. Clemens of thirty-two Pearl Street. Uh, I guess this is residential. I, I didn't see the lot, but it looks like it's just residential general law. Um, and I, I passed it. Um, granting the variance is not going to be contrary to public interest and to take number two in and it is not a violation of the spirit of the ordinance because this is a, this is a residential area. There is already a deck there. Um, the spirit of the ordinance is not going to be observed, is not going to be observed. It's, it's, it is what it is, okay? Um, so, uh, there's no detriment to society at all or, you know, by, by building this, uh, bedroom. The, it will do substantial injustice um, because it is in the best interest of the owners with no negative connotations to the surrounding neighbors. Uh, the variance, the value is surrounded properties would not be diminished. I don't see where they're gonna be, uh, affected in any way. Um, and that no fair and substantial, there's, there is an unnecessary hardship and that is no fair and substantial relationship exists between general public purposes that the ordinance provision and the specific application of that ordinance to this property. Again, it's a non-conforming home, an old home. There is, the, the public purposes of the ordinance were created long after this house was built and the, the, the use is reasonable. Uh, clearly, there's some medical issues here um, that really aren't part of this discussion, but it's a reasonable request in my opinion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
We have a second from Mr. Foot? Discussion of the motion?
Anything you can plan? I'd like to entertain. I'm gonna go ahead and call the roll then. Yeah?
Yes.
Mike?
Um.
Uh, Roland, motion to approve. This is.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Passes five zero. You have a good night. And please. Next is application Z zero two zero two zero dash zero one one six variance twenty twenty five.
Winnebago Ash.
Oh.
Article Six, Section two thirty-five dash thirty-five A and B to allow for the addition of a second floor bedroom on existing garage and a covered front porch. The applicant is available.
Jamie Irving is the one that you're looking for. And it looks like Mr. Price is also there as well.
Hello?
Good evening.
How are we?
We are fine. How are we?
All right, thanks. Um, if you would, um, I'm gonna raise my hand on my desktop. I don't, unfortunately, I don't have video or audio on my desktop, but that's where I want to share my documents from, if you don't mind. So there should be two Jamie Erbings. We'll see. I think that's that works. Well, as long as you folks can see the plan set, I think we'll be all right with just, uh, just the one then.
You should be able to share the desktop. There we go.
Alright. Well, thank you, guys, for, uh, staying late and having a look at this with us. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And special thanks to Karen. She was really, really great helping, uh, prepare this. So Karen, thank you.
That's what I'm there for, anytime.
So in any case, as, uh, as the application, uh, mentions that we're hoping to add a bedroom above an existing deck and add a covered front entryway. So we'll actually be doing work within two setbacks, both the front setback or the road setback and one of the side setbacks. I think you guys all have the application in front, so I can show you a couple of the 3D renderings if that helps.
It does.
Okay, let me see if I can figure that out. Not sure why that's not coming out.
You may need to close out the other one and then bring up the separate one.
Oh, there we go. I think I'd be better at this. I can't see how to do that. Yeah. So I'm actually sharing on this.
Okay, can you, um.
This one here.
Can you, uh, show the full screen? Alright, go to, um, stop sharing and then, um, go back to share. Up top, go up. Okay, stumble, share screen.
Oh, there we go. Uh, there we are. I'd like to share multiple.
Um.
I'm sorry, we'll start with this one here, I suppose.
You, yeah, if you just click on it and hit control and click a mo, you can show them.
Okay, there we go.
The one, the other one should be in there too.
Alright, so. Mind that one? Alright, so this is the, um, in any case, this is the, the front entryway. So on the right, you have existing. What we're proposing to do is actually extend this, for lack of better words, this dormer. Install a radius for the front entry steps. And then do this. No. You guys can hear me, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is actually not extending any further into the setback. Or at least, I think on this side, it's maybe a let me see here, I believe it might be a foot or two further. The plan set, um, is in your application packet which shows the existing plan view versus the proposed.
To clarify, Mr. Chair, the front portion of that house, that existing bow window and those front steps are currently in the front setback. The front setback line is right, it's front part of the main house, so what he's proposing to go from the step, just the steps to a farmer's porch type entry, that whole that window and those stairs are already in the front setback. This is just adding that farmer's, kind of connecting the two. That helps clarify.
Thank you, Karen.
So the rounded part is just steps?
It is, yes.
As I'm looking in this.
Yeah, that's a, that's radius set of stairs.
Yep.
Just the stairs and the actual rest of it's right here and it's just moving. It looks like a dormer over a set of windows from just being over the windows to being.
Extending, yes.
Extending it over.
Creating a porch type structure.
But that's a bump out?
The windows.
Set of windows is a bump out already?
It is, yes.
And so you're just taking that bump out and moving it all the way to the end of the house where the front door is.
Precisely.
And then you're adding, uh, that little shed roof that goes across. And then you're gonna add another little V shape so that the water doesn't run down and get you soaked when you want to go to the front door and the snow doesn't fall on you. And make a little rounded, I get you, man.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna have a rounded stairs to kind of make it aesthetically pleasing.
Exactly, yes.
That's about what I get.
That, that sums it up pretty well.
Okay. So, let's move to the, uh, other bedroom.
Yes, let me see if I can, uh, learn how to do this quickly.
Uh, your co-pilot was doing a good job.
That's why. I should be her assistant, really.
In-house tech support.
Yeah, she's the one running the show. Alright, so. So let me just call that up here, if you don't mind. Give me one second. Bedroom, there we are. Alright. So top left, you have existing, and this is the point of view from the, the water side of the property, if you will. Or the south, southwest side, looking towards the back of the house. And if you look at the application packet, I believe it's the third page of the actual application package, you'll see the tax map with um, the lots, the setback lines actually superimposed. So what we're posing here is the second level for a master bedroom. So no, no footprint will actually be increased. Only a height increase. So not encroaching any farther into the setback.
I guess the picture you're showing me is, I'm not quite comprehending what's changing.
So you see, um, I wish I could actually let's see here. We're, nothing as far as the footprint goes. So if you can, can you see my cursor here in the lower left?
Yep.
So existing is here.
Oh, okay, I get it now.
Come down to the remodel on the lower right and we're gonna bring it up one level for a second.
You're gonna put a kick out at the top so you can add some windows and stuff.
Yep, so, but we're actually not changing the, the square footage. Only adding a second story. So we're not encroaching any further into the setbacks.
The existing garage currently encroaches into the setback there, talking adding, raising the roof line a little bit to add a second story to that existing single-story garage.
I'm glad you read my mind. I was gonna ask, I was looking for, okay.
I, I guess you could say, Steve, we're just raising the roof.
Yeah.
No, we've had this discussion before. That's why I'm saying that. We're just raising the roof. We're not going anymore, uh, out, um.
I guess I was trying to pick what part of the building to that and, okay, so I see it because it's in the setback already and we're raising the roof. Yeah, yeah, okay. Alright, now I'm, I'm up to speed. Absolutely, Roland. Yes. Right.
But it is in the setback. It is in the setback.
Yes.
He calls both the front.
Modified the front. That's in the setback in the front. And the side setback is where that bedroom modification is gonna happen. So. Yep. And that's understandable also.
Yeah.
Cause Gail and myself have been questioning that. This is the second application. We've kind of wondered why, cause something's already there, but it's because it's going higher.
Yeah, it's adding to the non-conformity. Um, as for the front dormer, there. Yeah, it's adding to the non-conformity. Um, as for the front dormer, there is, I mean, at the front little entryway he's planned, he's got a dormer window that also sticks out into that front setback. Um, I don't know with the stairs how much further out it's gonna come, but um.
It, it may, it may be as much as a foot, but I mean, what you're, what you're, what we're gaining, we're losing because the radius will actually cut off the corners of the existing, if, if you understand from explaining.
It, it looks like it's almost as much aesthetic as it is anything.
It's, yeah, it's, it's exactly that, really.
Um, I, I, my only concern is, is that you don't get too far into the front setback, so I guess what my question is, is I need to know how far into the front setback you think you're gonna go and this does include the stairs.
And I can tell you, um, so the um let me screen share this with you.
So you're not gonna go any further out than the dormer window?
Well, no, not, not exactly, um, if you would look what I'm doing here is zooming in. So the current stairs, I believe are here.
Oh, okay.
So we're at three steps out.
And that's the front of the house?
That's the front of the house, correct.
Okay. And where's the dormer?
Uh, this is existing here.
Oh, I see, and you want the steps to come down the front and not the side?
Correct, yes.
So how far out into the front setback are the steps gonna go? Bottom step is what we're concerned about.
He's moving.
I believe thirty, well, assuming on if we keep the stairs to code, you're looking at thirty inches if that's three steps out.
Okay, so it'll be three steps, so you're gonna go into the front setback by about two and a half feet is what you're saying?
More or less, yep.
More or less, and how far out is the dormer window? About two feet? Would you say? I, I don't know a lot about dormers, I know their depth, but I don't know.
The dormer.
If I'm looking at the tax map and how they drew it, the that front window where you see the punch out is already and then the covered porch, that's already in the setback?
Yes.
The total encroachment.
There is no covered porch, it's just a door. He wants to put a covered porch on it.
Right, but the cover porch will be also in the front setback. The new covered porch would be in the setback where you see the V now, you see that V uh for the roof line?
Okay, yep.
That's gonna, everything back to that main wall to where you see the double windows on the second floor, you see those? That's right on the line from what I can see here in the drawing. That is your line where the front setback starts, okay? So, the original double window with that little roof on it is already in the setback. If you can see there in this picture he's showing now, so everything new, the covered porch and the steps and stuff would automatically be in the setback, the covered porch and stuff from what I understood, that's a twenty-five foot and not a ten foot.
Yes.
Setback. From the property line.
Mr. Chair, if I might, the total encroachment, including the stairs from the front portion of the house is approximately eleven feet. If you look at the image he has on the screen now in front of that window, there's like a black, I'm not sure if that's a shrub or the eleven feet would come out to approximately where the front part of that shrub is, just to give you a visual as to how far that will stick out. That's the complete to the edge of the rounded stair.
So eleven feet out, that would still give us fourteen, a fourteen-foot setback.
Right.
I finally got one of them.
Better than I do.
Yeah, I looked at it and I, I didn't realize, I, I'm not a good judge of distances and I, I didn't realize that most of it was already in the setback. I, I could see from the front of the house what he was gonna, what he was trying to do and and then where he wanted to raise the roof in the back, but, okay.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public was to speak for or against this application. Please uh find the little hand on your screen and push it and uh the planning director will answer. And if the applicant could clear the screen for the moment and give us back thank you. So. I have nobody. That the record indicate, no one from the public was to speak for or against this application? I'll bring him back to the board for any other questions. Yeah?
Yeah, I'm good, I, I saw it, it's gonna look nice, actually.
Thank you, Gail.
Mike? Okay, like to entertain a motion?
Uh, can we do this in one motion? Um.
Do what?
Uh, well, it's actually two separate little building projects, do we need, we can do them both in one motion?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Um, I'll make a motion that we approve um zoning board application, variance application Z oh, two zero two zero dash zero one one six a variance or seven, oh, I'm sorry, twenty Winacoche Street, tax map four thirty-four, two forty-three, zero two two. Um build a, a second story on the barn area that will stay within where that area already is out back, it's not a barn, but it's like a garage and to build a front dormer. Um, a front dormer in place of what is now um some steps. Uh, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the encroachment is about the same as it was before. And again, it's it's a good-sized lot on one side, on this side, he has very little space. Um, if the variance are granted, the spirit of the ordinance um would be observed because it really doesn't violate that the spirit of the ordinance is not anything egregious, what we've already got there already exists. Um, again, that's a tight side of the house, I don't see where it's gonna affect anybody on the other side, I really don't, any more so than what's already there. Uh, will do substantial justice um because it is allowed in this zoning district and I don't see where there's any detriment to the general purposes um outlined in our ordinance. If the variance are granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because the renovation is not gonna have any significant effect on any of the surrounding properties. And in this case, the unnecessary hardship is that the general public purposes of the ordinance are not violated by this particular request and it is reasonable as far as the construction and the purposes that they want it for, although the purpose is immaterial.
Hey, you have a motion? Okay, you have a second? Discussion? There'll be none, I'll roll Steve. Uh, let's see. Yeah? Yes.
Mike?
Yeah. Roland?
Yes?
Yeah.
Mister.
Vote for approval.
And Steve, yes. Short passes five zero and enjoy it. And have a good night.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
And thank your, your technical assistance for their assistance.
I'm gonna have to buy her dinner now, so.
Well, it was worth it, we got approved.
Hey, thank you all for putting in the late night, I appreciate it, take care.
Okay.
Now, the next one is a rehearing request. Uh, for application Z zero two zero two zero, that's zero one zero nine, it was a variance. And they wish to consider a rehearing. Now, my question is being deemed is, I've read the minutes, I've read this, do I need to set aside myself? And just provide over this, or do I participate?
I think if you read the minutes and you understand the essence of what transpired last year and then you read the question, I think that you can participate.
Okay. Um, I've read both the rehearing documents and I've read the minutes that I provided over the minutes, so I, I will stay in it. Now, as I'll rehearing, this is only the board discussion amongst itself. Uh, going through to see if it uh indeed uh if there was any new evidence that wasn't presented during the meeting. That would suggest that error was made and that made a reconsideration of a rehearing should have.
Okay.
There's no input from the outside whatsoever, so with that being said, we'll go ahead.
You know, I'm a bit curious here in that there isn't more uh relief from animal control here. What we have here is a fence that these people feel that they need to put up at their own um cost and effort to protect them from these pit bulls next door. To me, it seems like it's in it's being solved in a manner that isn't necessarily the most proper way. If the people next door own the dogs, then by ordinance and more than just lease, they should keep them under control or penned in some sort of fence that will contain the animals. Now, as to whether there is fencing out back or a cage out back, I can't speak to that. But I have a time here saying, oh, okay, I'll approve this just because, it, it, it isn't, it's a, it's an ugly fence, it's out in the way and they're not even the ones who should be containing the dogs. Though, it does present a risk as we've been told to the lady of the house from these uncontrolled dogs next door.
One has a right to protect themselves.
Yeah.
Across my property line in an aggressive manner, then it would be met with an aggressive manner. And if it's crashing my car, then there's civil
Right.
thing within the law that can be considered.
I, Mr. Chair, that's kind of where we were going with this last month. This is the wrong venue for this. Yeah, they need, they need to probably, we're not.
It's not the proper venue.
Yeah, these prob, folks probably need to offer an injunction with the dog. If they're getting.
No, that's not our venue either. Animal control is not our venue.
Controlling neighbors' dogs is not a zoning issue. If they haven't exceeded the number of dogs, as long as they haven't exceeded the number of dogs allowed within that zone, then it's none of our business. I'm sorry. Okay, but the thing that was presented to the board unfortunately is a fence. Events that is over the, I think, what's the code, three feet?
Oh, four feet.
Four feet is the code. Um, and that's always been in my many years, many, many years of being here and that was for the aesthetics and the friendliness as several not just one. I've had the pleasure of working with many planning directors here in the city and throughout the years, none of them have said anything different than the design criterias of the city and the fronts that would allow that four foot so people could see by and you had a pleasing inviting front yard, not a prison front yard type situation and that's what happens when that aesthetic of a six foot went in play, okay? These are the same things I would have said at that point in time in the meeting if I was here, I apologize for not being here, but from what I seen was judged and what I seen, what was presented, you know, I don't see where the board erred in his decision. Uh, Gail?
I'm gonna, like I said, I'm gonna recommend not to rehear this primarily because while I have sympathy for the applicant, he is in the, they are in the wrong venue. This is a land issue, you can't solve and you can't solve a neighbor problem with a land, in a land board, you have to go to another proper authority, we are not that authority. Um, we're only here to talk about the fence. Um and the fence, I, I agree, it's inconsistent with what's in the rest of the neighborhood. Uh, he makes mention in his appeal, there is a fence around Baldick's um golf park. I think that is set up as a nonprofit, I don't want to even get into what happened with that fence, it's been there a long time. All I know is, is that I don't recommend for rehearing because the land board is not the place to adjudicate this. He has no land problem, he has a dog problem.
I don't understand how a six-foot fence makes it go from total danger to total safety. The dogs can run around that fence if they want to get at the, the property, so the six-foot fence is not the issue, it's a mistake.
Yeah. It's giving false hope, false hope and security. Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion to not rehear, to deny the rehearing. So, in other words, what I'm saying is, is a motion in the affirmative, Mr. Chair, would be a denial to rehear this.
Okay.
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion? We have a second, I will call lead order. Uh, Mike?
I favor the motion.
Mr. Foot? Roland? I don't know if you recorded that, cause I don't see him here, but timed out. Yep. Okay, just verifying and so that's four and Steve. Okay, just verified, and, so that's four, and Steve votes to not rehear.
Oh, and I, I didn't vote, I vote, I vote not to affirmative on the motion not to rehear.
Okay. So the motion to rehear was denied. Alright. Do we have any other business before the board tonight?
I have none.
There being, being none, motion to adjourn? Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All in affirmative?
Yes.
Alright.